Gentlemen, welcome Midwest City Council to the October 22nd version. Glad you're all here. Some of you are forced to be here, but I'm glad you're here anyway. I do want to introduce some special guests before we get started. We have the Carl Albert ROTC group from Carl Albert High School be presenting our colors this evening. As Mr. Sullivan makes his way up to offer the invocation, we've got Cadet Bean, he's a freshman, plans to be a doctor when he graduates. Cadet West plans to be a veterinarian, he's a sophomore. Cadet Wilson, a junior, just plans to go to college and go to OCS. And Cadet Calva, who is a junior, and he plans to be a pediatrician. They are led by Mass Sergeant Kelly, Mass Sergeant West from the Carl Albert Junior ROTC group. And Mr. Sullivan, can you offer the invocation? Please stand for the presence, uh, invocation and presentation of colors.
Almighty heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this beautiful weather we're enjoying today, Father. Father, being the sustainer and giver of life, we know that you can send rain our way and we dearly need it across this state of Oklahoma and in this region of the country, Father. We thank you for this council and we thank you for their service. Father, they have decisions before them tonight and I ask that you give them a measure of your discernment and your wisdom and give them peace in their decisions tonight. Thank you so much for this great state and city. Father, this great nation, we thank you for those who are all over the world tonight ensuring our freedom to assemble like we're doing in this very place. Thank you for Jesus who provides us forgiveness of sin and freedom from sin. And we ask all these favors in His holy name. Amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mary, color. All right, face. Forward, mark. All right, all.
Wasn't that great, ladies and gentlemen? Thank you all very much for being here. That was a great presentation. We've got a lot to be proud of, of our young people and don't ever sell them short. They're doing a great job. We absolutely have no proclamations tonight, so you're saved that pain. And we... You started that, didn't you? So, well, I'm glad to see everybody's in a good mood. Move into community-related announcements. Mr. Lyons, the floor here.
Just have one announcement. Just FYI for the community, the southeast 29th Street Bridge over Crutcho Creek is scheduled to begin Tuesday, November 5th. This is an ODOT managed project to replace the existing bridge over Crutcho and rehabilitation on the drainage structure for Coleman Creek near Sam's. This will be an eighth-month construction project. The existing Crutcho Bridge was constructed in 1942 and is currently load-rated. The highly-traveled corridor will benefit from having a structure with expected lifespan of 75 years, and this is a critical infrastructure for Tinker Air Force Base as we move goods in and out of the base. So, we're glad to get this project going and you can't see the bridge, it's underneath the roadway, but you'll see it when it gets all torn out. What's the date? Just a reminder, November 11th is our Veterans Day Parade here in Midwest City. Time starts 10:00 a.m. And the parade route will be down 15th Street from, I can't think of the street. It's an amber alert. Just the edge of the golf course on 15th, on the west edge, down 15th to the east, then north down Douglas Boulevard to Midwest Boulevard, I mean to Reno, and then Reno to the park entrance. So, that's roughly the, most people know it, but just in case.
All right.
And I hear there might be some council people handing out some candy. I don't know if that's true or not, but...
There may be some council people and all kinds of folks in. All right, that makes sense. We move into consent agenda. Yes?
Before we move on, considering next week is Halloween, I just wanted to mention, and I believe that Josh did a press release saying trick-or-treating is allowed, suggested, maybe not the exact verbiage, but from 6 to, I believe it's 8:30 p.m. at least, for those who want to participate. And I did want to mention that when I was at the Y to pick up my, let's go, let's get Midwest City moving packet, they have a flyer up for their trunk or treat, which is going to be the 26th between, that's this Saturday, between 5:30 p.m. and 7:30 p.m. It's a drive-through trick-or-treat event. Dress up, dress down, join in on the fun for sweet treats and lots of laughs with your little ones at our local YMCA.
I would encourage everyone to get on the Midwest City Chamber website. There's a list of all the different churches and other community trick-or-treating, trunk-or-treats and all that sort of thing on that website. There's probably 12 events on there, so, yep.
All right. Now, moving to our consent agenda, because I would place on the consent agendas of the council members, by unanimous consent and approved routine agenda items, final motion. Any council member requests to discuss an item or if it is not unanimous consent and the item being removed, referred in regular order, chartered, intended motions, approved.
I move to approve, I'm going to pull nine, right? Yeah, yeah. I'm going to approve all consent items aside from three and nine pulled for discussion.
Also, we are showing on the big screen the municipal authority meeting agenda, not the council meeting agenda.
Did you say three and nine?
Yes, sir.
And did you make that informed motion?
Yes, I move to approve consent agenda items aside from three and nine pulled, being pulled for discussion.
I have a properly formed motion in a second. All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction motion carries. Item number three, Mr. Lyons.
Discussion consideration, possible action or approving of and accepting a grant award from the state of Oklahoma by and through the District Attorney's Council in an amount of $158,074 to implement a new Midwest City PD Crisis Intervention Response Team program, authorizing the mayor, city manager, and/or his designated to enter the necessary contracts and documents to implement all aspects of the grant. Ms. Kraft.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this is Midwest City's, our Midwest City's application was approved for Department of Justice 2024 Burn State Crisis Intervention Program funds to develop a crisis intervention and response team within the Midwest City Police Department. Happy to entertain any questions, and I have backup.
Hi, I did have a question. The $158,000, is that going to be an ongoing expense or is this one-time-only expenditure and there will be no further expense to the city going forward?
It is a one-time grant, so if we do...
But the expense afterwards, once this...
Would be on the city.
It would be on the city.
Okay, and...
Unless we find other funding.
Have we factored that into our budgetary... Okay.
No, that'll come in next year's budget if we, and this will be a trial period anyway to see how this all works.
Mrs. Grant, would it be possible that DOJ may have the same grant available next year or...
It's possible. We haven't checked into it. And there's also grants on the federal level too that we could try for.
Chief, do you want to say anything on this? I'm just ecstatic, y'all.
So, just to give you a little history, good afternoon, Council. Just to give you a little history of our CIT program, then I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy because he's the one that brought this idea to us, and it's now coming to fruition, which we're really excited about. But about 15, 20 years ago, whenever we had a person in crisis, we would have to call Oklahoma County and they send out a deputy to evaluate the person because we didn't have the resources to do that. We weren't trained on that at that time. After a few years of that, we actually got introduced to the CIT training and we were able to send our officers, so we had a handful of officers that could start handling the problem. Well, from there, we had instructors. We sent people to instructor schools, so now, and Jeremy is one of our, he's our lead instructor for our CIT program. And so, we're able to teach all of our officers this, the CIT program. Well, now, we're going to try to take it one step further, and that's what Lieutenant Zuniga will explain here in a minute, but it's more proactive than reactive and kind of keeping a list of our residents that use a lot of police services for that, and we're going to try to get out in front of that so they're not constantly calling and needing help where we can, we can do different things to try to help alleviate the problem. So, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Zuniga.
Evening, Council. Any questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Under your program, I know that, well, I knew that you had a batter's intervention, officers that would go out, would they be incorporated into this program or would they be standalone? Are they considered crisis intervention going out?
Batterer's intervention?
Yeah, yes.
Not part of this grant, this grant is strictly for the crisis intervention program, so mental health services.
So, would, batters would not be considered a crisis?
It's kind of a case-by-case scenario.
But do you still have the batters program where the officers are trained to respond to batters intervention, those kind of?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we also work with an advocate specialist who is basically on 24-hour standby. Anytime we call her, she can line up resources almost immediately for people that are victims of, like domestic abuse.
So, I know, go ahead, Rick.
No, you're good.
I know that it, this is going to address individuals who are high-risk, including individuals who are repeat callers. In the state of Oklahoma, mental, we are ranked one of the highest states for the rate of mental illness and one of the poorest when it comes to investing to treatment. And so, like you said, and like the chief said, this is a proactive effort and this puts our city above and beyond what many, what other cities are lacking to do. This makes our citizens safer, this makes our officers safer, and it also reduces the tax dollars being spent on officers unnecessarily going out. I know that this addresses mental health, but it also had two other areas which are hot-button issues. Would you elaborate a little bit about the work that you guys will be doing with our kids as well as some of the unhoused populations as well?
Yeah, so, so we're, our program's going to consist right now of two full-time police officers and myself. The grant would allow for additional funding for overtime officers to work more hours during the day. We're going to have one assigned to the school districts to provide mental health awareness literature and suicide awareness literature and teach some classes to the students. We're going to provide contact information, some private contact information in case they're worried about something happening at school or, you know, the stigma of mental health. You know, they'd be able to contact us and we could get, we could get them the resources they need. We're also going to, part of the grant is for drug dependency prevention. We're going to have funding to hand out, forgetting the term real quick.
Narcan.
Narcan. So, we're going to buy, we're going to get some narcan and we're going to pass that out, along with the literature on how to use it, and also fentanyl test kits.
Awesome, thank you.
Rick, did you have a question?
I do want to make one more comment, and again, applaud our police department. As throughout the nation and across the state, we hear about mental health calls that end up in tragic situations. This municipality has not had a lethal call like that, and it always falls on the shoulder of our officers who oftentimes upput their own lives at risk to protect our residents. And I just want to thank our grant writer, I'm assuming Ms. Kraft was behind this grant and, as well as the chief. And also, Tim, I would want to be an advocate that if the grant doesn't exist, to see if this could be something we can continue years and out, and maybe instead of contracting with a mental health worker, but hiring one that can work in partnership with the city full-time. But that's a conversation for next year.
Yeah, we'll go with baby steps.
Awesome.
I have a question. Sorry.
And this may be for the chief, but as far as staffing this program, Lieutenant, you referenced two officers plus yourself, so are we going to add two staff members that will be dedicated to this program then, to PD staff or...
So, so for this year, we're at a very unique position. We're completely full. Our staffing levels are 100%, which we've never had since I've been at the police department. So, we're able to use some of those positions that haven't been filled in years and assign them to this position, and that was our goal. Our goal is to keep that running each year. Depending on how this, how this year goes with our, with this program, if it grows and develops, well, then we'll, we'll look at adding additional people and different things like that. You know, obviously, that's a budget concern for us, but we're, like he said, we're going to take baby steps, see how it develops, and if we have a lot of success with it, then we'll hopefully be able to add to it.
So, we're not going to be short on any patrol cops?
No, no, actually, we, our patrol shifts are 100% full. We're, we've been able to get positions we haven't had for so long, just because, you know, if a police officer retires, it usually takes about a year and a half to fill that, to hire someone, to train them, to get them out on their own. Well, we haven't had any folks retire in a while, and with the new legislation on the retirement pay for retirees, that two years, so we've got a two-year window to do some things with where we'll be fully staffed, and then we'll be looking at some challenges.
Well, that's something I think is important, and this really came during Sid's times where he made a request that it takes so long to hire and train, it's the training side, that we, when we get notice of a retirement, we open a position and start the process because we would get down, I don't know how many officers at a time, four or five officers at a time, and so, it's something we did and, you know, think we've had a good budget to allow us to do that. Thanks to the citizens, so.
Well, thank you. Move to approve, thank you.
Okay.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction motion carries. Item number nine, Mr. Lyons.
Discussion consideration, possible action of appointing Ms. Janice Swartz to the Midwest City Historical Society Representative for a three-year term ending January 12th, 2027.
I do want to point out to the council members that there was a scribbler error in the agenda. It's not Janet, it is Janice.
Right.
So, I just want to make sure that's corrected. And Ms. Swartz, you signed up to talk on this item. Would you like to talk to council?
Excuse me, sir. May I have the floor for a moment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I would like to introduce her.
Okay.
To the, to the audience, to the people at home and to the council members and the city manager. Well, everybody, including Don. I met Ms. Swartz during my run for office. I found her to be a very professional, and she lives in my ward, by the way, very professional, dedicated person that lives in Midwest City. Her father's family settled in Oklahoma before statehood. They went, they came to Payne County. Her father was stationed at Tinker before World War II. It was then called the Army Air Corps. Janet went to Star Spencer High School. She went to Central Oklahoma, the University of Central Oklahoma, and earned a bachelor's degree in education. OSU, she got her master's in education and guidance counseling. Her husband is a Vietnam-era vet, and together they raised three children here in Midwest City who are high school bombers, Midwest City high school bombers. Okay. Her and her husband served at the Sunbeam Family Services as foster parents for, and they served for many years, and they helped raise 25 displaced children. Janet taught in Midwest City Elementary School and in Oklahoma City, okay, for over 25 years. Both she and her husband served as board members at the New Community Church. Her husband is the president and she is the secretary treasurer. She is busy helping her three sons raise 11 grandchildren.
Now 12.
Now 12, now 12.
And counting.
And counting, and counting, okay.
12 for the Rockets.
As she stated, I believe I would be a benefit to the city of Midwest City, and I totally agree, and I'm asking the board to consider approving her for this position on the Humanities Society.
Historical.
I'm sorry?
Historical.
Historical, okay, historical.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Ms. Swartz, I was mistaken. You signed up to talk about discussion item seven, and we'll call you up when we get to that. And welcome aboard.
Mayor, if I may take a moment, I would like to address an issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Swartz, it took me three months to get her approved to serve on this committee. And at the time that I placed her application, I also placed another person's application, and I don't know what happened to it. And I'm a little disturbed by that because when you go out and ask someone to serve and they agree, I think we need to honor that and move as quickly as we can so that I don't lose their interest in serving our city. I say that to say, I think we need to look at our policies and procedures, tighten them up, so we can help people, the citizens of Midwest City and especially Ward III, who wants to serve, to help them with the process so we can get them on board and moving quickly. A couple of months ago, I did say that I would be willing to help write policies. I do have a background in policies and procedures. Right now, I don't know if we're consistent in what we're doing. So, I went online, that's what I do, and I pulled from our webpage the qualifications and the steps to approve someone on the committee, on these different committees. And for this particular committee that I'm speaking of, the process is that I make the nomination and the council approves the nomination. There's no middle process. And I think the middle process was inadvertently put in, and that's why my person is not here to be recognized. I just want consistency. I don't care what the rules are, but if we just be consistent, because I was able to get Ms. Janet approved without that middle step, without the middle step. So, just consistency, and I'm asking the council here, I, well, let me back up. I really think it's really important that we get citizens' involvement. That's how we're going to retain people in our city, to pay the taxes, to be a part of what we're doing, is if they, if we can get them invested in something they're interested in doing, serving us, it will just improve us even more. I think we're doing good work, but we could always do more. So, with that, food for thought. I need some help.
Well, you're fixing to get it.
I'm fit...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This has been discussed, and next council meeting, all of you are going to be getting a book. And basically, the book is going to contain policy and procedure, current policy and procedure, all of the committees and the requirements. And what we're going to ask of you, each of you, is to review that and submit your suggestions to the city attorney, and that way, we can move it forward. I wholeheartedly agree with you. We've been needing to review the committees, abolish the ones that are no longer appropriate or inactive, and establish good policy and procedure. One of the things that I'm really would like and we should be doing, and you brought it out, several of you brought it out, is the fact that we vote on people, but we don't have a bio to go along with them. So, I'm asking, as we go through this process, that that bio, as we bring them on to, to be voted on, that the bio be included in the agenda as published. So, that has been a topic of discussion, and we're on board with it, and you'll be getting that book next council meeting. And what, January, we're asking that the input be completed by January timeframe so we can start implementing your suggestions and getting a solidified cohesive policy in place.
I think we're outside the bounds of the Open Meetings Act right now for the discussion that we're having on this item because it's broader than what it was listed as. That being said, I'm going to ask that in the interim, when we get sent a request to submit someone to a committee, then an explanation for what that committee does is sent with our request to submit someone. For example, not just, hey, I need a nominee for the tree board, but here's when the tree board meets, here's what the tree board does, because then when we turn around and try to solicit people to apply for those positions, it's good to have some background information.
And those explanations will be included in that book, and I wholeheartedly agree with you, and we just need to move forward, so.
And Mayor, I'd still like for us collectively to be able to have some discussion around this subject matter at our strategic meetings so we can think out loud collectively before we submit our suggestions and kind of see where we're all at. And I wanted to address something, and I think this may end up having to be an agenda item that comes before us. I also read in this memo with this particular item... I also read in this memo with this particular item that Ward Five and Six, and Mayor, your representative, are supposed to serve a three-year term. And Ms. Bonner, who I believe I nominated and was approved over a year and a half ago, I see her term would be expiring in '26. So there's some inaccurate, I guess some updating we need to do to make that correct. But I think that needs to be another agenda item at some future point, or, Don, would that be something that is resolved through procedures and policy when we update them?
We'll have to look at it.
There's, there's one more side to this that we haven't spoken about, and that is for every one of these committees that we, you know, nominate people for, there is generally a staff person in the city who is just assigned to babysit this committee, to manage this committee. And without staff support, these committees will flounder. But the individuals in the city who are often tasked with managing these committees and interfacing with them are not necessarily compensated in any way for that, nor is there, are their regular duties reduced to allow them to adequately have time to manage these groups? So it's kind of like we're putting an extra burden on them, expecting them to keep track of who's expired, you know, who has qualifications, who's got the resume up to date, et cetera, et cetera, which is what we want and what we need to make productive committees out of them. But they are doing it almost under the radar with no recognition and, and at no extra benefit to them. So I visited with the city manager about this and my thoughts, and he, I know he's mulling it over, but let's, don't forget that every time we make a requirement or a request on one of these committees to update the information, et cetera, et cetera, to schedule meetings, tell us what the meetings are, put the meetings on the website, all that nonsense that absolutely has to happen to make them productive, it's a staff member who's doing that, almost in their spare time.
But I don't think that's a fair assessment. Respectfully, I mean, here's the situation. I, I would challenge you to find a job due to description, and I don't know if Troy's in the audience or not, but that does not say, and other duties as assigned. And I also know that from experience in interacting with the city manager, there are what we'll call a shift discretionary shift in hours, for example. If, for example, I'll just use neighborhood services, if a neighborhood coordinator works in the evening and they're carried over the time that they're expected to work, they can offset that later that week, et cetera. Additionally, respectfully, Councilman Thompson, I would challenge you to name me three committees that take a substantial amount of time.
Parks and Recreation, Josh Ryan, he's sitting right up there.
Ladies and gentlemen, I-
And he works hours on that committee, and it's one of the most functional committees that we have, and it's because of his work, and he is already overburdened by his other duties, and yet he takes that one on. So that's the first example I will give you, and I'm sure there are others.
This is all good discussion, but this is not an agenda item, and we're skirting on the verge of violating open meetings. This is excellent discussion, but we're going to have to make this an agenda item and bring it back. So I would ask that we move on, and it's great discussions. Please submit these suggestions as requested next month, and, and we'll move on, okay? Thank you very much. We'll move into our discussion items. Discussion item number one, Mr. Lyon.
PC 2187, public hearing, discussion, consideration, possible action of request to rename Avenue, America Avenue to Soldier Street, and request a rename of Soldier Street to American Avenue, both being a part of the Soldier Creek Industrial Park. I'm not going to go through that part. Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is a request to rename two streets. It's almost an identical street name swap, and, and sort of the, the, this came about because of the addressing system that we have. American Glasser, who is wrapping up construction on their new facility, I would like for their facility to be addressed off of, I guess what would have been America Avenue, but their entrance faces what is Soldier Street, so they've requested that we sort of swap the streets, and it made sense if we were going to rename streets, to rename the one they were going to be addressed off of as American Avenue. This impacts American Glass. The municipal authority is also a property owner in the industrial park, and there is a third property owner, which I think is the Hub Bike Park, which does not have any buildings or anything on their site that are addressed.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a properly formed motion and a second.
It is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council on this particular item? Hearing or seeing none, I do have a motion and a second. All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Item number two, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action of approving an ordinance, amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter One, General Provisions, Section One dash two, Rules of Construction, Providing for Repealer and Severability. Mr. Marsh.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. What this amendment would do will be to do a little bit of cleanup. As you know, a, last year, we had a redesign of some of our departments, and as opposed to going through our ordinances and taking out a community development, which appears, and a community development director, which appears probably 150 or so times in our ordinances, we do have a, we do have a, a section in our ordinances that are definitions that apply to each and every one of our ordinances. So as opposed to doing 150 of these, thought it might be easier just to do it once, and so we've re, we've defined community development and community development director as meaning those two departments which are planning and zoning, you just heard from, from Matt, as well as engineering and construction. So moving forward, those terms can be used that way throughout all of our ordinances. Additionally, there was a little bit of additional cleanup concerning the Health Department to mean, for that to mean also the State Department of Health, to redefine health officers. You may know, we undertook that a little bit, but there's still some places where health officer is used. We don't have a health officer. We've changed that to be an inspection officer. We have defined inspection officer. This ordinance change was brought before the Ordinance Review Committee, and it was recommended for approval. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Marsh?
I have a question, and I don't have it in front of me. I knew you had two. Is this the one that had councilmen? When you were changing the terminology to councilmen?
It did not, no.
It's the next one?
I don't, I don't remember councilman anywhere. This did have a change in, this did have a language change in gender. We found that there was a typographical error in that, so that it said the masculine, it said if a, we use a term that's masculine, it also means feminine. When they originally did it, they had it, the word neuter in there instead of neutral, so we changed it to neutral. And then we also did the other way that says if we have a term in there that's feminine, it also means the masculine and the neutral.
Sir, that's, that's called a Freudian slip. It's called a Freudian slip.
I didn't write that one back then, but we did find it, and, and that changes in here as well.
Is there any further questions, Mr. Marsh?
Well, I think that was what you said.
Or is it being neutered? You know, it's called a neutral. It's, it's been fixed.
Yeah.
Hearing or seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Item number three, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action of approving an ordinance amending Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter One, General Provisions, Section One dash 12, Enforcement Officers Providing for Repealer and Severability. Ms. Floyd.
Thank you. Good evening. This was an amendment to just bring our ordinances up to state law, which does allow for service of any type of legal process by certified mail. And so we were just trying to get that so that we could allow for service citations and notification of court dates along with state law. This amendment was brought before the Ordinance Committee, and it was set to be approved.
I have a few questions on this one.
Sure.
So, item number three. So currently, our ordinance is not compatible with what state law states, and would it be correct that up to this point, citations were not being certified mailed to households in Midwest City, or?
We, we were following state law and utilizing registered and certified mailings.
Okay. So this practice of certified mailing individuals is already in practice in Midwest City, and really it's just a matter of updating the language to?
Correct.
Okay. And prior to the state law, what was the practice? That, that a citation would have to be hand-delivered by an officer?
It would have to be hand-delivered and signed, but that was many, many, many years ago, so.
Okay.
Any further questions, Ms. Floyd?
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Item number four, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action of approving an ordinance amending Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Twenty-Five, Municipal Court, Article One, and General Section Twenty-Five dash sixteen, Issuance, Content, Service to Summons, and Providing for Repealer and Severability. Ms. Floyd, again.
And this is kind of the same thing. This is just applying it to our court process and allowing for the service by certified mailings.
So question, the same question again. So currently, the practice of the city is in compliance with state law, which is we will certify mail, summons, and, okay, already, thank you. So we're already practicing it. We're not changing your practice. We're just changing the language to, update it to our practice.
Yeah, we're updating the ordinances to conform to our practice, which conforms to state law.
Okay. Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Item number five, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action of approving an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Eight, Purchasing, Section Two dash one eighteen, Bids Required, Invitation Providing for Repealer and Severability. Mr. Marsh.
Thank you. Several years ago, the city, as well as many municipalities across the state, used what we're known as purchasing cooperatives. Those are consortiums of local governments, not only here in Oklahoma, but regionally. There's one in Minnesota, there's one down around the Gulf Coast, Houston-Galveston area that are currently in place, and we use them as well as many other municipalities. Several years ago, the Attorney General ruled that, that under the Competitive Bidding Act and the Central Purchasing Act, we could not use them, and municipalities had to cease doing that. A couple of years ago, the legislature changed the Competitive Bidding Act to allow purchasing cooperatives to be used. What this does is it just codifies that change from state law into our municipal ordinances allowing for the city to use purchasing cooperatives. I can tell you, I've interfaced with one of them, which is called Sourcewell out of Minnesota. They still had all of our accounts and account numbers ready to go, so, and they're ready to use us. What this does by the use of a purchasing cooperative, it is giving buying power to all the local governments, thereby we can buy larger items for fleet management that Mr. Streets has to do, like for trash vehicles and fire and police vehicles and things like that. We can get them at a lesser cost. And so this was brought before the Ordinance Review Committee that did recommend approval.
You had me at lesser costs to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Item number six, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action of entering into an agreement for professional services with Johnson and Associates in the amount of $115,500 for a project to reconstruct the drainage of Southeast Fifteenth Street and the Choctaw Creek Tributary for East Branch, just west of Hiwasi Road. Mr. Bundy.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. This is a much-needed project out there at Southeast Fifteenth Street. We border it with the city of Choctaw, and it over, it overtops probably once or twice every few years. And Ms. Grant, Ms. Kraft, sorry.
Sorry.
The Grant manager.
Grant Kraft, same difference.
Sorry. She, she helped us get a EPA grant, and we're really excited about it. It took, it took us a while to get through the red tape, and we're ready to move forward with the design.
This was a community grant through Congressman Cole's office, just for the record, is how we, how we entered into this.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Item number seven, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action awarding a bid to an approving of professional service contract with Silver Star Construction Inc. to provide on-call general and emergency services for the Public Works Department. Mr. Streets.
I do. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilpersons, City Manager. This is actually a pretty exciting moment for us because, once again, we're able to put into place something that helps protect not only our customers, but the city we live in in a number of ways. I don't know if you remember the ice storm of Halloween a few years ago? I do. It was an unpleasant time for us. This emergency services contract we had in place before was what we used in order to help get all of that mess cleaned up. I do want to point out that Von Sullivan actually is the first one to put this contract in place many, many years ago. It was the first one of its kind in the state of Oklahoma and has now been used as a template by many other communities. This, again, helps safeguard our community and helps prepare us for any kind of a disaster if we don't. It also expedites the process because we don't have to wait and try to get a contract in place to have folks come out and do the work. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have about it.
I'm going to ask a question. In reading this proposal, and I certainly appreciate the work was done during the ice storm, et cetera, and I have no objection to the emergency services piece in this proposal, but the on-call general troubles me, coupled with, like, things that are included in the scope of work to include sidewalk installation. I know that we need sidewalks throughout Midwest City, but I'm not sure that there's anything as far as a, such a substantial need that it needs to be contracted out. So my question is, could you explain to me in more detail the need for the on-call general services part of this contract?
Absolutely. I'd be glad to. This is actually a stopgap for us. There are some times we have to go get work done, and sometimes it's hard to get a couple of quotes. We wanted to competitively bid it, so instead of actually having to worry about all those small pieces of work elsewhere in the community, this gives us an opportunity to essentially hire a reputable contractor to do work through a workhorse system.
At a fixed cost.
Correct. And with the oversight and assistance from our Engineering and Construction Services Division.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any further questions for Mr. Streets?
Question to approve.
Hold on just a minute. Ms. Swartz, you signed up to discuss this item?
Janice Swartz, but I'm, I've already talked with him, and this is concerning the church on Westminster Road. And I've already talked with Mr. Streets, and he's given me, I was asking about processes of getting things done. Six years we've been waiting to get something done out there that we put in for, and so he's given me some advice on how to proceed with that, and I don't need to say anything else. Thank you.
Well, thank you, ma'am. I'm glad that he was able to help. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Streets.
Thank you.
We now move into new business public discussion. I want to remind you that if it's not an agenda item, we cannot engage in a back-and-forth discussion with you, but you're welcome to bring whatever issues before the council at this time. Is there any? No, Mike, you're not allowed.
Mike Stroh, 8726 Southeast Fifteenth. I forgot to send Mr. Lyon an announcement, so I need to announce that the annual food drive is coming up November 1st, 2nd, and 3rd at Sam's. And so please forgive me on that. I needed to announce it and let you all know.
I guess you're allowed then.
Thank you, sir.
Hearing or seeing none, we do have an executive session attached to this agenda.
He has some dance assistance to talk about.
Well, he needs to come forward.
He raised his hand, but for some reason, he's just sitting there.
Well, he needs to come forward. Mr. Goldschlager, were you willing to, wanting to address council?
Yeah.
Well, you know the procedure, you should have been there.
Before Glenn speaks, just, hang on.
You got four minutes.
Four minutes.
Hang on, just, Mike talked about the food drive quickly, that's a large event at, at, um, the Sam's for three days. We have a tremendous amount of, um, volunteers and staff that go out there, and we got, how many pallets of food last year, Mike?
Thirty.
Thirty pallets of food that were donated by this community that served how many people?
Two hundred.
Let's, let's put him on the spot.
Over two hundred, and, well, he came up here late, he's gonna have to answer the question.
I think on the website, it's last year's date on it.
Hmm, okay, we'll check, we'll check that. Okay.
What was that, year's date?
Check the date for the food drive on the website.
The website, twenty-three, is it?
Yeah. Are the days right, just the year wrong?
Oh.
Okay, we'll, we'll get it changed, right, he'll have it fixed right now.
Mr. Goldschlager, the floor is yours.
While we're talking about community develop, are we not doing the Halloween thing at the park this year?
No, sir, go ahead and, and, and set your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Glenn Goldschlager, fourteen oh nine, Evergreen Circle. There's an item on the agenda to do a study of Public Works. I think of the city as a, as a human body, the police and fire are the skin, the, what goes on in this building are the organs of the body. Obviously, Terry Craft is our heart, and, and what holds this city up is the skeleton, which is Public Works. There, we tend to forget Public Works a lot. They, there are water and sewer and parks and streets, there are the people that clean out our bathrooms, and clean out our bathrooms, and then clean out our bathrooms all the time, because they keep getting messed up. We, we buy equipment for other departments because we think it's important, and then we take a backhoe and put it on a three-year program, because we don't think that backhoe's important for Public Works. Well, it's, it's important to Public Works as a fire truck is to the fire department, or a police car is to the police department. We sit there and rent man lifts to put up the holiday lights, when we could buy them for what we're spending to rent them. We do this on a lot of the equipment. We buy seven new police cars, which I'm glad we do, and I'm glad we do it on a rotation. But we don't buy pickup trucks for Public Works. We have Public Works pu, pickup trucks that the, that the paint is peeling off the sides. It's literally embarrassing. I know that police and fire are upset sometimes that the Public Works Department doesn't fix their equipment as quick as they do. Well, maybe if we got good equipment in Public Works and we weren't having to patch it together all the time, they'd have time to do the rest of this stuff. Right now, we have two garbage trucks that pick up the, the cans in the parks, both of them are down. They're going around putting barrels on the back of a pickup truck, hauling it over to the transfer station, and hand dumping them, and then when we have a workman's comp claim, they're wondering, well, why did these people get hurt? Well, maybe if we had good equipment, they wouldn't have gotten hurt. Public Works should not be the after everything else we do, do. Hurricanes and police and fire getting all their accolades, which they do, don't get me wrong here, but who do you think's clearing all the debris from the roads so they can get over there and do their stuff to start turned on? But have you heard a single story about Public Works? Not a word. I just want, I, I, I'm a big supporter of Public Works, mainly because they don't have anybody talking for them. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Could we have this gentleman with us at the next budget review meeting? He will get you more money, Mr. Streets.
I'd like to say that, from personal experience, I can't communicate with Mr. Goldschlager, but I can communicate on the horseshoe, that I do personally know that, um, Public Works does appreciate an appreciation breakfast.
We will take that under advisement, Ms. Yates. All right, does anyone else have anything to bring before council? Hearing or seeing none, we are in, we do have an executive session, I would entertain a motion to recess from the council agenda, please.
Mr. Recession.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we are recessed from the council agenda, and I call it order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have a consent agenda, these items are-
Mayor, before we move into the municipal agenda, can we stop at the further information? Is that allowed, Dawn, procedurally?
We are, we're recessed.
We're, our agenda.
Uh, okay.
We are recessed from it, obviously, we'll have to come out of recess, uh, at some point in time for the executive session.
I will address this with Tim off-radar, then, sorry, Mayor, proceed.
We do have a consent agenda, with these items placed on consent gen, trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, and there is not unanimous consent, the item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Aye.
(laughing).
Are you just trying to mess me up?
Sorry, Mayor.
You're, you're getting me out of my rhythm, Ms. Bennett. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries, discussion item number one, Mr. Lyon.
Take no action tonight.
Take no action on number one. Item number two, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible of action, possible action of awarding the bid to and approving a contract with Tim Coe Blasting and Coatings Inc. in the amount of two hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, provide all necessary services to repaint the ceiling, rafters, and other appurtenances, whatever that word is, in the, (laugh) appurtenances, in the, uh, water treatment plant, Filter Bay, located at ten seven oh one Water Plant Road, which we, which we need to do for a very long time.
I have, I do have a question, or, uh, I believe we just put a new roof on that building about four, this is not the same?
Actually, this has to be done in order to put the new roof on the water plant, control building in Filter Bay.
So this has to, this precedes the new roof?
Correct.
So the four hundred thousand dollars for the new roof will be after this?
We'll have to spend some money, and I don't know that we have a, an estimate for that.
I think it was roughly four hundred thousand.
We don't have an estimate for that yet, and it's gonna have to be budgeted, so.
Okay.
And has this, um, company done work for your department before, and two, if we've done any consultation with them, have they made any other recommendations?
They're actually one of the better, we solicited bids, had them come out and actually visit the plant, to take a look at the project, to give us some idea whether or not they had, and they had to provide, obviously, qualifications to us, and they were by far and away the best of the group that provided qualifications, and we believed them to be experts. We also were able to do some work to determine that we did not have lead in the paint that was falling in our filters, and, uh, that was not the case. So, it's a good group, and we would advocate, I do want to say that Carrie worked tirelessly to get this done, met with multiple contractors and water plant staff, and without her effort, this wouldn't have been able to get on the agenda in front of you, so.
As to whether or not you've been able to talk yet on this agenda item, your list of previous experiences that they shared, the person that had done the previous work for it, was-
Extensive.
-is quite as-
Very extensive.
-extensive and significant, so, I mean, it made me feel more than I used, as far as purchase and contractor.
It is expensive, it's a lot more expensive than what we expected. Uh, the reality is, we ended up having to supplement using some of the other projects to help get this paid for, so unfortunately, everything is more expensive than what it once was, and I suspect the case, the same case will be when we have to take, tackle the roof as well.
I do believe I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
You did.
All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The extension motion carries, once again, thank you, Mr. Streets. Discussion item number three, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action awarding a bid to and entering to a contract with Silver Star Construction Company Inc. to provide on-call general and emergency services for Public Works Department.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Uh, we now move into new business public discussion, does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned, and I call it order the Midwest City Hospital Authority. We have one discussion item, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion item number one, discussion, consideration, possible action to approve the September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Chair, entertain a motion to reconvene on the, uh, council agenda, please.
We gotta, Tim, gotta read the second.
Oh, you gotta read the executive session.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, going into an executive session is allowed under twenty-five O S three oh seven B three to discuss the purchase or appraisal of real property, and in open session authorizing the general manager administrator to take action as appropriate based on the discussion in executive session.
Move to adjourn to executive session.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I believe the motion should be that we reconvene on council agenda, and then we go into executive session.
Correct. It's listed on this agenda, and then you can leave open council to do.
Reopen, yeah, reopen, you gotta reopen, now you gotta come out of recess.
Well, did you come out of recess? Thank you.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries, and now-
We need to reconvene to council agenda.
You guys are really messing my rhythm up here.
We're just-